Roll call, please.
Alderman Cantaloupe.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Colley.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Roy Wesley is here. I need a motion to approve City Council minutes of May 1st, 2014.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, we have none. I have no written communiques. Mayor's report, I have nothing this evening. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Forrest for that item.
Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll be turning the presentation over to Mr. Camelli. He's one of the principals of development of what formerly was known as the Wooddale Memory Care. I believe the name is now the Bright Oaks Facility in Wooddale. There's been, you know, staff and has received a lot of questions from the City Council as to the status of the project. It was our feeling that rather than having you hear things second and third hand about what was going on with the development of the property, that Mr. Camelli come in with his team, give you a presentation, kind of fill you in on what's been going on behind the scenes, where they're at right now, and what their anticipated look-ahead schedule is. So with that, Nader?
Sure. Could you please state your name before you start for the record?
I am Nader Camelli. I'm CEO of Bright Oaks Group.
Thank you.
K-A-M-E-L-I.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for inviting me to tell you about the project. As you may know, this project started about a year and a half ago, and we have been diligently working on the project. And I wanted to take some time to give you an update on where we are, who we are, what we've done so far, and where we're going. So, the name of the company is Bright Oaks Group, and Bright Oaks Group is a brand, is a brand-new family of senior living properties. The kind, the products that we focus on are assisted living and memory care. We are the owner and developer of family of products, and I will walk you through which one of them and where we are. And the community consists of assisted living for elderly, which assists them in activities of daily living. It is very different than nursing homes, and it is different than apartments. So when you look at continuum of care for seniors, there are apartments that are independent living. Then when they do have a need for assistance, they go into assisted living. And under our license, we can help them with activities of daily living, but we cannot administer drugs. If they do get to a point where they need help with drugs, they go into nursing home. And under assisted living, people that have dementia and Alzheimer issues that need to be in a secure facility, they also have, they're covered by assisted living. So they are managed and they're treated differently. Bright Oaks is a partnership between three different entities. Chicagoland Foreign Investment Group, which is the funding source, and Bright Oaks Development that does the development, and Acumen ASL are the operating companies that work with us. We are multi-state development. We have currently projects in Illinois, in Florida, and in Indiana. Acumen is a very large company that has been around and has significant experience in managing senior living successfully over past 150 years. The projects that we currently have in Illinois are in Aurora, Elgin, and Wooddale, which is this one we were talking about, Fox Lakes West Dundee, and planned for Lockport. In Florida, we have, we have one in Naples, actually two in Naples now, Wildwood, Fort Myers, Sun City Center, Sarasota, and West Palms are part of the plan. This project, our first project, is a small project, 60 units in Aurora, and it is currently under construction. We have, we started the project in September of last year, and we are continuing the construction if the weather permits and starts to cooperate with us, we should be done before end of the year and open the facility. Second project is, is in Elgin. That one is also under construction, and that one is also planned to be completed and opened by end of the year. The largest and the best project we have is the one in your city, city of Wooddale. It's a 155-unit project. It's quite large. It's about 160,000 square feet, and it has a lot of amenities in it. I'm gonna walk you through some of those as you can appreciate. 155,000 is a, is a huge building, and if I was to walk you through every aspect of that building, we would be here all night. So I'm just gonna hit the important parts. Bright Oaks of Wooddale, this is the team, and I have some members of the team over here with me, and they are ready to answer some, any question that you, you may have regarding the project construction, where we are. This is the site plan, which shows the, the first floor of the building, which has a lot of services in there. In, in this location, what we have done is we have put a lot of services that could be open to the public, and we have opened them to the public. So the first floor has a lot of retail, retail services, but they are services that are geared mostly to service the people that are in the building, but they do have application to others in the community. So we have opened it to the community. This represents our brand. The signage of all of our properties have a shape like this, and we work with the, with the city to make it something that, that is consistent with your codes and ordinances, but that, that is typically what you see with Bright Oaks. And the design that you see, the porticoche and, and the front of the building is, again, a brand element that we have on every one of our, our properties. This is the main entrance of the building. And what differentiates us from every other community is that we use a lot of greenery in the building. So just think of it, if you have seen Rainforest Cafe, inside our building is mostly like that. So there's a lot of green used in the building, and there's a lot of services. So this is what it looks like. As you come in the building from the top, you have the reception on the left, and you can see all the plants and aquariums that are there. And I'll show you some pictures of this as we go on. And towards the, the middle of the building, that, that orange, the orange piece is the walkway that connects the left side of the building to the right side. And after that is a living, living space. There is a piano in there, and there are tables and chairs, and the fireplace in the, in the center, and the blue spot that you see on the bottom, that's the patio. So the greenery and the landscaping, everything goes from the outside to the inside and to the back of the building. This is similar to everything else that we have on every floor. On every floor of the building, we have large, large patios, and the patios are filled with greenery and living space for people to enjoy. This is an example of the kind of interior that you're going to see. Very high-end. Let me go back here and highlight some items over here. So as you come in to the left, which is on the right of your image, to the, we have a wellness and rehab. So there's a rehab facility in the building, because most seniors do need rehab. We have a full-service rehab in the building that's open to the public, too. On the left, we have a bistro. We have a very large kitchen in this, in this building. Just our kitchen is about $600,000 kitchen, and that services a lot of different dining venues in the building. And the bistro is, is one area that's open to the public, and they can come and enjoy the food over there. To the, to the south, what you see is the, is the main dining hall. And again, there is a lot of different features in there. There is a portion of the dining hall that's inside the building. There is a portion that's on the south side, what is highlighted by the lines that are empty in the, inside, those are all glass. And then there's the patio, and outside the patio, there is a lot of landscaping and greenery that makes it very pleasant to sit out there and have your lunch, have your dinner, breakfast, anything. To the right, on the northwest corner, we have a full-function salon that services the building and outside. On the south side, we have activity area and, again, outside patio. To the right, what you see is mostly an area that's designated for medical services. So we have a clinic that we are bringing in here, it's very much like Minute Clinic that they have in CVS or in Walgreen. It's going to be in the building, with the difference that those clinics are mostly managed by nurse practitioners. Our clinics are going to be managed by physicians, and it's going to be available to the public. And there's a chiropractor there, and we have area for other types of physicians that temporarily visit to come in and service the community. So, all of our, our properties are designed to be multi-generational. And that is with the intent to bring families together, and not just take the elderly away from the community, but create an environment where families, children, grandchildren can come and, and hang out with the grandparents and not just leave them. I don't know if you have visited nursing homes or not, but nursing homes feel like hospitals, and kids don't like to be there. In order to take that away, we've, we've designed everything to be very much home-like, and we have created areas that are inviting for children. What you see on the south side, that's all children's play, play area. There's the putting ground, there is a children's garden, there is an underground tunnel, there are slides in there. That is all designed for, for children to enjoy and wanna be here. This is the detail of what I was just explaining to you. These are some examples of what you're going to see in, in the building. To, to the right, on the lower, you, you see that underground tunnel for kids. And we have an aquarium where every resident in the building can have their own fish, and they can have their own fish put in the aquarium and manage it and come and feed them every day. There are two major destinations in the building. The first floor of the building is a destination with lots of activities and lots of services that are open to the public. The sixth floor is a destination that's only open to the residents in the building. And the sixth floor is, is built of apartments all around, but in the center of the area, there are sitting areas. This is one of, one example of that. And it is a, it's an area that's designed with skylight. So light comes into the building, very much like that picture over there, and there is green, and there are going to be tables and chairs where people can sit there and have their breakfast, and read their, read newspaper, or have a quiet conversation, or anything they, they like to do. There, different parts of the building are designed for different kind of atmosphere. There are going to be areas that are quiet, there are going to be areas that are busy, there are going to be areas that have activities, some that just rest. And this is, again, one of the patios that we have on the upper floors. As you can imagine, putting a large patio on upper floors is a, is a construction challenge. But given that people live there in, in these buildings day in and day out, we have taken that, that challenge, and we have built large patios. What you see on the right is, is actually what's going to be in one of our, our patios. And every floor has its own outdoor space. Just something to have, have you appreciate what we are trying to do in the building. Timelines, question that, that is on everybody's mind. So we were just about to complete architectural design in October, November of last year, and get into construction. When we found out that for whatever reason, the location that we are in is a seismic Class D, and it is designated as earthquake land. So when we found that out, it sort of was a grenade that was just dropped on my lap and blew up everything that we had and put, sent us back to the drawing board. Apparently, that area is, is susceptible to earthquake, and the entire city of Wooddale is. So for the building that we are building, we have to go in 60 feet down for foundation and put pillars in there and change the building and put all sorts of sheer walls in there and load-bearing walls and all sorts of things. So that is what has consumed all of my time and my engineers' time to try to figure out how to rescue this project. Because as you can imagine, once something like that comes in, everything that we have done goes out the door. So all the work that we had done for nine months, we had to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out the solution. And for the past six, six months, we have done it. We are now at a point that we have a working solution. Initially, when that was introduced and the engineers told us what we have to do with the building, I ended up losing about 25% of rooms in the, in the building, which made the project not doable. But with a lot of work with them, trying to figure out how to move the walls, where to put them, where, how to strategically place them and how to split the building, now we are at a point where we have reclaimed all the lost, most of the lost space, and we believe we have a work, workable solution. With that said, we're planning to have the architectural plans done by, by June, and engineering will be done by August, which comes after all the architectural plans are done. The, the superstructure of the building is gonna be pre-cast, and we have contracted with ATMI to do the pre-cast for us. And pre-cast is gonna go into manufacturing. We currently reserved manufacturing time in October, and we are working with them to see if we can pull that schedule in. And if everything goes based on this plan, pre-cast is going to start shipping panels to the site, and we can start erection from December of this year. And that is going to take us 12 to 15 months of construction after that. That's my last slide. So I'm gonna stop and answer questions, which I'm sure you have plenty of.
You know, it's a beautiful building. I mean, I, I'm impressed with it. I, I just have a couple of questions, and I don't know if you can answer it, maybe our staff. The initial plans that came into this, was it a six-story building complex?
Yes.
Absolutely. It was already.
Yes.
Okay. And this is not for, to do a different ownership?
Nope. Same ownership.
What was the first company that came in that was building?
It's the same company. The name of the, the name of the business is, is new. It's the same ownership. We owned it from the beginning. We just have put it under a new brand.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I... I'm in favor of this, but what bothers me is I just don't wanna go back, and, and this is being delayed and, and, and delay, and I'm gonna see that fence around that whole complex again. 'Cause last year, we got, you know, a lot of complaints about that fence, and there's nothing going on over there. Okay, so is that pretty much in stone when we're going to start this? I mean, is that pretty much on pace right now? There, there shouldn't be no more hiccups in this project?
Well...
Go ahead.
I, in terms of construction, I can't tell you if there will not be any hiccup. I, I have scars to show you. There will, I don't know if there is not going to be any hiccups, but my team sitting here, they can tell you this is the best, that this is a very conservative schedule. And from my perspective, this is actually killing me. So I'm, I'm the finance behind this. I want to pull this project in, but this is what they are holding me to it. So we are working with them every day to try to pull this schedule in. But you know, a project this size has so many different components, so many different people involved in it. Everyone is on their own schedule. I don't control every aspect of the business, of the, of the project. But to the extent that I have contract with them, we are shooting to meet this.
Is all the groundwork that need to go forward just completed? All the water mains and all that, has that been completed, moved yet?
No.
John, hold on. You have to come to the microphone. State your name.
I'm Ian Lamp, last name L.A., M. as in Mary, P. as in Paul. Vice President, Marketing, Sales, Lamp Construction. We are the construction manager for the project. We did start last fall with the engineering permit, so we were starting to plateau the sites. We've made some repairs to the storm, storm trap that's there, extended the storm sewer. I believe we are, started work on the sanitary and the, and the water lines, but we're not, not finished. And then when we found out the issues with the, with the soils itself, and then we had to slow down and do we come up with a reasonable solution, it was like a million and a half dollar hit to the project. So we've been working consistently, day in and day out with Nader, to try to find a better way to, to the, as I say, build a better mousetrap, and we think we've got it now finally. Now, he says the pre-cast will start December 15th. We still have another three months prior to that to get ready for the pre-cast. So we have to put the foundations in. We wanna try to get some of the curb and some of the base and the binder down, too, so it starts looking more like a project than a war zone. So it's not exactly... Now, as he worried about, I have a trailer out there with my name on it, and so what are they doing? So it doesn't look good in my marketing scheme either, so I'm trying to get this done as quickly as possible as well.
Well, I just, my concern is, is kind of, if he ain't going to do anything, I mean, if it's going to be delayed more, kind of clean up that site. I mean, I just don't wanna sit here and get phone calls again and...
Agreed.
Alderman Woods.
Given the pre-cast and the erection schedule, are, are all the final engineering drawings done and approved in order moving forward with the caissons or pylons? Is that scheduled? I, I see that you got the panels scheduled, but...
It needs to be backed up, and then may see the engineering by August 2014 has been done. That's when also the draw, the final drawings for the entire project will be submitted to the city inspection department for their review and permit and comments as well.
So we won't, we won't have the completed plans until August, middle of August, you're saying?
Correct.
And, and this question will be for John then. So John, then how quickly would we turn those around?
Mr. Forrest.
Two weeks, a month?
Yes.
D, all of the above.
Go ahead.
Because of the, this building is so specialized, we will be sending this to an independent plan review consultant. I've talked with him several times. In fact, he did come in and have a courtesy meeting with the owners of the property. Typically, his turnaround time for this type of a plan review is two to three weeks.
Okay. You have a follow-up?
So if we get, so let's call it September, first week in September, that you get that, that's one month to, to get the panels into manufacturing, and then eight weeks later, you'll be in, that's pretty tight. 'Cause we, you still don't have the pylons or the caissons or the foundation or any of the site work done, correct?
That happens, that'll start happening in September, whatever, as soon as the permits are approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Forrest.
What we can do, and we anticipate that we can do, if you can get the foundation plans to us prior to them finishing up maybe some of the other structurals, we can have those reviewed. We can get you a foundation permit, and then you can start installing the foundation while we're finishing with the rest of the plan reviews.
And I, I believe that's still the goal, the, the design team as well, too?
Yeah, that's how we have planned it. Everything is gonna go in, in parallel. So as the engineering group is, is engineering, the foundation is going to be designed. The foundation is gonna come in for foundation permit, then we're going to start the foundations while the pre-cast company is manufacturing.
Go ahead. Follow-up?
This one will be for John, or I guess for you guys. Has this building changed significantly from the original building as far as size, square footage, configuration? Obviously, you modified the inside to make the, the engineering work for them.
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
I did not let the shell change, so these guys tried to push me.
Okay, that answers it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? How are you doing? One, go ahead. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I want to thank you for finding a way to proceed with this project. I know it cost you extra money and to move forward, and I thank you for going forward with this.
Thank you much.
I hope you get it done earlier than later, because if we keep going this route, I'll be using it very soon.
Me too.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the manager's report.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Do want to make one announcement to all the residents. Don't forget the Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 26th, starts at 11:00 a.m. in the morning. Next, consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda. I need a motion, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Woods.
I'd like to pull off number three.
Number three. Anything else? Sorry.
Number two.
Number two? Alderman Eugene Wesley. Anything further? And we needed amendment to the motion, taking off number two and three. Frank, you were the first.
I'll make that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cantaloupe.
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Now, entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of partial pay request, number five, Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Northwest Water Treatment Plan Upgrades Phase 1B Project, not to exceed amount of $421,454.56. We will skip number two and three. Item number four, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Gary R. Weber Associates for Landscape Architectural Services in the not-to-exceed amount of $68,906. Item number five, an ordinance authorizing the donation of personal property owned by the city of Wooddale. Item number six, a resolution seeking to approve real property transfer documents between the city of Wooddale and Illinois Department of Transportation for the purchase of portion of parcel 1KA0012 in the amount of $109,000 for the Intersection Improvements Project. Item number seven, a resolution seeking to approve real, real property transfer documents between the city of Wooddale and Illinois Department of Transportation for the purchase of portion of parcel 1KA0004 in the amount of $37,000 for the Intersection Improvements Project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Cantaloupe.
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports. Alderman Woods, planning and zoning.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
No report.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Lazaro.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Sizbarski.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, we will go back to item number two. Approval of partial pay request, number five, Northwest General Contractors Incorporated for the 2013 Infrastructure Improvements Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $104,557.27. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Wait, do, hold on.
Oh, that's all right.
I looked at... I looked at, I didn't see, put your hand up. Roca.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and H.R. Green Incorporated for the Central Avenue Sanitary Sewer Main Replacement and the not to exceed amount of seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions, Alderman Woods?
Uh, yeah, this one's probably for the, uh, city, city attorney.
Okay.
I won't go over to the, the, probably two dozen things that I marked up, but the, the big glaring ones were that this bill has to be, all invoices to be paid within fifteen days. I don't even think that's possible for us to turn a invoice in fifteen days. And if that's the case, we should, as a general rule, change the language in there, as is their, you know, fines and penalties after thirty days and, and all the corresponding things.
Mr. Bond? Oh, you want to continue me?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple, you know.
One, okay, go ahead.
The rest of them really are that this contract is, uh, very much slanted. If I was writing it for myself, I would probably do the same thing, but we indemnify this contractor at every turn and every bend. I'm not quite sure what he's liable for, and it's absent any language regarding errors and omissions insurance on the project too. So those are my general concerns.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, there, there really isn't anything where the indemnification we kick in, on the one hand, and that is a good point. We generally do change the, uh, the timeframe to thirty days or, uh, put some language in there, because it's subject to council approval, so we'll make sure. If the, the motion is to be amended to include that, uh, that change in provision. And again, you have that time under state statute, you got thirty days to pay the, under the Prompt Payment Act. And there's a provision in there that specifically references, uh, state statute, but that, just to make it clear, so we don't get into a, a dispute over that. That's a, a change that should be made.
All right, Frank, you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Roca.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval list of bills, May fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, Alderman Sizmarski.
Approval list of bills for May fifteenth, two thousand four, one million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seventy dollars and eighty-two cents, that was my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, I have a, a few here. On, uh, page three?
Page three.
Seagate Businesses, it's the first one, on page three, for one thousand...
We didn't hear that, on page three, which one?
Uh, the top one, C D W.
C D W.
C D W.
Government, uh, for one, one was for one thousand, eighty dollars and twenty-three cents, and that other company is one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents. What, what is, what are those companies?
Nick, can you answer that question, I know, step out a second?
Jose, A I T?
Yeah. There's a question on the bill, I don't know if you heard, C D W?
For both of them.
First one you're referring to, the one thousand oh eight volt?
Yes.
That is a sixteen terabyte mass storage device, or this is a small closure that holds four different hard drives, and total sixteen terabytes. What we're going to do with that is we're going to move it to a water treatment plant once...
Is your mic on?
It is not. We're going to move it to the water treatment plant, uh, once that room is completed and everything's up in there, which it is, as of this week. And I'm going to try and stream some backups over there, so we have some off-site storage.
And the second one? The sixteen hundred dollar one?
Yes, that is semantic endpoint protection, that is, um, not an antivirus, it's our antivirus software, it's a renewal, comes up once a year.
Anything further?
Okay, so that one was a budget item then, for the one thousand?
Correct, oh, yeah, the one thousand six thirty-four was, correct.
Okay, Mayor, I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
You know mine, um, page five. Uh, Emin Nelson, uh, for two hundred and twenty-two dollars. What, what light was that for?
Mr. York, can you take that one?
Yes, uh, this isn't for an actual light, this is for locating services, for when we have a Julie locate request that, uh, we send Emin and Nelson out to do our Julie locating our streetlights.
And where, where was that at?
I do not have that information.
Okay. I, I, I have another one.
Go ahead.
Page six, Forest Preserve District for two hundred and fifty dollars for a permit fee on Carter, I believe it was. What, what do we do on Carter that we have to pull permit for?
Who, oh, Mr. York, go ahead.
Yes, sir, uh, this is, um, Ward Two Streets Project, um, Phase One. Uh, this is the two hundred and fifty dollar application fee for us to, uh, put, um, the silt fence up along Carter, the south end of the, that project, that borders the forest preserve, so we have to pay for an application fee to get a permit in order for us to, um, put, um, erosion control on their property, because we don't have that much right of way there.
Okay, may I do a follow up with that question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Did we contact Forest Reserve and see if they would waive that permit fee, knowing that we improving that?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, they unfortunately will not, their policy is that they assess it against, uh, all municipalities.
Okay. May, uh...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Page eleven. Eminem locks. What's with all the keys also? Someone care answer that one?
Jose, Mr. York.
I can answer some of them, uh, some of them are mine. We had new keys made, um, for our new Assistant Public Works Director that was hired. We did not have extra keys for him, so those keys were made, um, at Eminem Lock and given to him, to get into the buildings. Those are the, uh, the forty-eight and the forty-nine ones. Metro one, obviously that one's that one, and I don't know about the...
And we went to Eminem Lock for that, and there was a locksmith right here in town? I mean, I miss...
Yeah, I guess the answer is yes.
Mr. Murmas?
Historically, that question's come up numerous times in the past, and whenever we quote it, Eminem Lock is always cheaper than the town, the vendor in town, which is why we always go with Eminem. Same thing with the mechanics, a lot of times, out of town is cheaper.
I, um...
Go ahead.
I have, uh, two more. Uh, page twelve. McGinnis Brothers for, uh, Saw Creek for five thousand, sixty dollars and zero cents. Where was, uh, where was the repair done and who inspected, make sure it was done?
Mr. York, go ahead.
Um, McGinty Brothers, um, does the inspections and they also do the repairs. To be honest with you, to get a, to, for me to go out and do an inspection or repair or inspection of it, I am not qualified for that. So, uh, they did the, they did the initial inspection, um, they came back and showed us what needed to be done, and they, they have sent some of the repairs on that, to make sure those Ajax are in proper working condition.
May I do a follow up on that?
Go ahead, yes.
So, they went out there and inspected and they had to do the repairs. Did you go to make sure the repairs were done before the bill was being paid?
I went out there and inspe, I went out there and saw them doing the work, I can't do an inspection, because I'm not qualified for that. But yes, I did see the work that was done there.
So the work is completed?
Yes, the work is completed.
Do you have one more, you said?
Uh, two more.
Two more, go ahead.
Page twelve, um, M.D. Electric Company for a streetlight for three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents, someone care answer that?
Meat Electric? Who's that?
I'd have to get back to you, and if you want exact location of where that repair was done, I'd have to...
What, what light pole and, and was it a new pole, or, I mean...
To be hon, I do not know that information at this time, I'll have to check with our billing department and get that bill and re, get that information to you.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that that bill be held until I get some answers on that, please.
The attorney is saying approve it and we'll hold the check until we get that information.
And then I have one final one.
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on, Anthony, did you have the answer? Sorry, I'm not used to, I'm used to having Brad here, I didn't, I should, you're right in front.
I did look at the bill, the bill does not have the location on it, it was for work that was done, there was a contractor working in town. They did damage some wires, so we came out and did do the repairs on the wires. I don't know the exact location though, I can find out, contact me and find out that exact location though.
So...
Hold on a second, you said a contractor did the damage, so are we getting reimbursed?
It wasn't a city-funded contractor, it was someone else, someone else providing work to a resident that did damage some, damaged some wires.
So do they, do they get billed, Mr. Bond?
They should, and if they did work, they have a permit, uh, that they would have sought, so, yeah, we should pursue that against them. The city needs to pay it, we contracted with them, but then we'll pursue it against the contractor who damaged it.
So, may I?
Go ahead, yes.
Now, now that throws a monkey wrench in it, did the, did they, where this happened, was the permit pulled on?
Mr. Forrest, would you know that? He'd have to check, okay.
Let's ask the location first.
Okay, so, I, I would definitely like the answer on that one, before that bill's, gets released.
Mr. Bond? Hold on.
So my recommendation is you approve it and direct the, uh, finance department not to issue the check until those answers, answers have been provided. Uh, to the extent they're not satisfied or with the response, or you're not satisfied, the matter can then be addressed at the next council meeting. Otherwise, you have to wait for that entire bill, and if it's resolved, you don't need to, so...
Oh, I understand it, but the, the thing raised that the contractor did some damage, and I not know that, um, and then...
Go ahead.
Do you have a final question, I believe, I think that will be it. I know everyone's holding their breath on me, so... Uh, page eighteen. The Stark Group, nine hundred dollars, what, what, what is that? Someone got the answer for that?
What page?
Page eighteen.
Oh, you got it, Matt, okay, good.
Yes, sir, um, this Stark Group training was, um, conducted, um, last week of, last full week of April. This was, um, work zone safety training that we put all the public works employees through on how to properly close lanes down, whether they be single lane, parkway, work on the parkway, how to safely do our jobs out in the, uh, out in the real world, so... That was a nine hundred dollar class, that's why it's broken up into three, three hundred dollar segments, because we spread it out between the three divisions.
And...
You have a follow up on that, otherwise, Alderman, hold on.
Was that a budget item?
Well, it's training, it's budget, we have a budgeted item for training.
So it came out training, that's all I want to know.
It was, it was, it wasn't over budget and training here.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you have a follow up on that?
And that one, yes. And that training, do they come out to the facility or you go there?
Yeah, he, um, the Stark Group came to this facility, we trained all twenty-eight of our employees at that time, here in this room, and then out on the street here. They provided us with reference materials that we can keep in our trucks, which we do, um, so that we are ready to, uh, close down roads and close them down safely ourselves.
Is it a flat rate? Is it a flat rate for, doesn't matter how many people there are?
Well, eh, when they give us a price, they gave us a price for how many people, I told them, and I told them it'd be twenty-eight people, so, um, sometimes it's a little bit more, a little bit less, the nine hundred dollars, I think the actual cost of the training itself was somewhere around seven hundred dollars, plus the materials that we had to purchase, uh, these reference guides.
Go ahead.
Is this, is this, is it possible that this training could be done at the state level too, that they do the tra, that there's classes that they could go to that might be cheaper? Because the state shut down lanes too, I'm sure they have courses that they could go to the facility of I dot or whatever, I, I'm not sure.
Mr. York.
There's classes, um, that are offered by Textuality Transfer, the, the T two that I dot provides, um, most of those classes are off-site. They do not come in, they'll come in for things like flagger training and those kinds of things. I've had really good luck working with the Stark Group in the past, Michael Kelly, um, the president of the Stark Group, who actually came out and did the training, is a, um, very recognized person in this format and, um, safety control. Um, he's actually testified on Capitol Hill, um, so, um, he's someone that I've worked with for the past thirteen years, um, and I trust him to train our guys properly, and that's what he does.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
And that response, Matt, uh, maybe that we could, uh, work with that company, and the city manager could work with, uh, Benciville or I task and do it a joint thing and maybe bring down the cost on that.
Well, that is also the case, but once you get to, and, I mean, that is an idea that we floated around in the past. But once you get to a, um, a group of fifty, sixty, seventy people, um, it loses kind of the intimateness of, and I understand the cost, the cost factor. We've worked with him bef, when I was in Carroll Stream, we did a program with him with Bloomingdale, the two of us together. It did reduce the costs somewhat, but once he goes over a certain number of people, then he needs to bring another instructor in, because he has to keep a ratio of, of employees to instructors, I think it's about fifteen to eighteen to one that he tries to do. So we had two instructors at this course, once he gets to more and more instructors, it's going to cost more money, because he's going to have to hire more people in to come in and do the job. So, there's, there's, um, ways of looking at those things, and we are open to those and working with, um, I've worked with, talked to Ross already about doing some joint trainings overnight task.
Okay. I have my bills, questions.
Okay, wait, Alderman Wesley, did you, you're done?
No, I'm done, I am finally done, so...
All right, Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
Um, page seventeen, Sherman's Nursery?
Seventeen?
Seventeen, Sherman's Nursery, I'm sure that's mine.
Is for the hard, is for hardwood mulch, don't we have M D L that does our tree service here?
Mr. York?
Yes.
I know he does sell hardwood mulch, did you even, did we look at his prices, or?
No, we did not.
Did not look at his prices?
No, I did not.
Okay. And at this quantity, are you having this delivered? I don't even think they have a truck to deliver this quantity to a location.
No, these trucks were, um, trucks that we sent over to get, um, truckloads, like the nine yards of hardwood mulch, that's a truckload. So when we needed them, we would go over and get truckloads full, so we didn't have, um, full trucks sitting in our yard, or we don't really have a place to have someone come in with a, a forty or, or fifty yard, um, semi full of, of mulch and put it someplace where we can keep it dry and keep it, um...
What, go ahead.
You're saying to keep it dry, what's the difference if it gets wet or not, that, it doesn't really matter?
Well, it doesn't matter so much, but it's hard for us to, to, we, personally, we don't have the room to bring in fifty yards of mulch and throw it on the ground somewhere in our yard, just don't have the room.
Well, in return on that, I mean, it's, it comes out cheaper if you buy a semi, you know that.
I understand that.
We need to, maybe we could find a place somewhere that we could store it for a week on a cement slab or whatever. Because the cost is a lot.
I, I do understand that, Alderman Wesley, we just do not have the room.
But check with Matt, check with Matt.
Are you offering your property?
I got a tree, why, why not?
We, we can dump fifty yards at Troy's Landscaping.
Fine.
Anything further?
Not for Matt, thank you.
You got it, somebody else?
Yes.
What page?
I gotta find another.
Alderman Sizmarski, are you ready, uh?
Yeah, so, somebody already answered, but the other one is, uh, video, uh, twenty-one, video gaming, it's only thirty bucks, but what are we giving back checks for to a video gaming if there are any money?
Anthony, yes.
Uh, that, that is a utility billing refund, they were a business in town, they closed, they moved out, and we are giving them a refund. Every time you open an account, you are required to put down a deposit, this is the refund of their deposit net, any final billing.
Wait, 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 who moved down?
Video Gaming Technologies.
Oh, you mean the company?
Yeah, the company moved out.
Okay, I got it.
Is this one of the, is this one of the ones that supplied our machines in town earlier, or no?
No.
It's my question.
Okay. All right, Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead, did you find it?
Yeah. I guess this will be for John Ford.
What page? What page?
Page 4. Tyborne Fire Prote, Fire Protection. City Hall Corporate Fire Inspection. Public Works. Is that?
Good.
I'm sorry, the mic wasn't on.
Cyborg Fire and.
That is yours, John, right?
Yes, yeah, we contracted Cyborg. They do the fire alarm testing for City Hall here. We have an annual contract with him, and then they do the testing quarterly.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, our fire department can't do inspections like that.
No.
Oh, okay. I talked to the fire district about going to get some training for that.
Anything further?
No.
Any other questions? Alderman Winger.
Just a comment that we already have a mulch pile issue, that if, if, if we do find that location, I'd be surprised, and then we need to move it out of the Potter Street area, because we, that's been a challenge for over, for over 10 years. Thanks.
Anything further? Ro, Alderman Woods.
Got a couple quick ones.
Go ahead.
Page 11, M&amp;M Building and Remodeling, block two AC holes and precast structure. Did we take out any air conditioning? Mr. Matt?
Matt?
Yes, thank you. Alderman Woods, that was two air conditioner units that were in our vehicle maintenance garage that were non-functioning anymore, and as you stood back there in the wintertime,